All right, hello everybody. I'm going to call the order this November 18th, regular meeting of the Core School Board of Education. This is meeting held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a community public hearing. There is time for public comment during the meeting, as indicated in Agenda Item 10. If you would like to make a public comment today, please feel free to fill out one of the comment cards. They are outside the door where you came in. Those will be picked up right after the superintendent's report. And now, if you would please stand and join us as we welcome Girl Scout Troop 8274, who will lead us in the pledge.
We're saluting the flag, shouldn't they be in front?
Please join me in saying the Fledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I know one second. Wrap something for each of you. Did a wonderful job. This is for you. If you could just say your name or allow for everybody.
Karma.
Maggie.
Yumi.
Yumi, thank you.
Abigail.
Thank you, Abigail.
Sophie.
Sophie, thank you.
Elliot.
Elliot, thank you. Oh, thank you very much for being here, but I appreciate it. All right, thank you, everybody. Welcome. Um, tonight, we are going to have our department highlight from Ada Elementary. And here to present that is Principal Melanie Postmoss.
Good evening. I'd like to extend a warm welcome to our distinguished school board members, Superintendent Ben Kirby, students and their families for doing the pledge tonight, community members, staff members, and my fellow administrators on behalf of Ada Elementary. I would also like to introduce our instructional coach. This is Chantel Vander-Villian. She's going to help in the instructional highlight in just a minute. Just a little bit about Ada. We're home to about 360 students. In addition to our kindergarten through fourth grade, Ada houses our early childhood special education preschool, Sprouts and Bud's preschools, two Great Start Readiness preschool classrooms, and an FHPS preschool. So as you can imagine, it's a joyful but very busy place. Our school is focused on improving reading achievement and our professional learning community teams help track student progress and improve teaching. At Ada, teachers work together in grade-level teams to plan and reflect on effective strategies. We also set aside 30 minutes daily for WIN, or what I need, time where students get personalized support or enrichment based on their needs. This time is guided by the work of our PLCs and happens outside of regular lessons. By combining our PLC teamwork and WIN time, we create opportunities for all students to learn and grow every day. And that's what's bringing us to our instructional highlight today. We'll talk a little bit about what PLC is. We'll talk a little bit about WIN time. And then, in the spirit of capturing it all, we have a delightful video to share with you. So we'll get started. There we go. So in all of our work, I'm sure the board has seen this graphic. This is supporting all our students every single day. And if you'll notice, right at the heart, that is our PLC process. That's where grade-level teams get together. They meet and they discuss all of the things that surround their instructional practice. We focus in on five essential questions, and those questions impact our instruction every day. When PLC teams meet, we talk about where we're going. We look at the standards that we're doing, the success criteria for students to reach those standards. We talk about where are we now? And that is the data that we collect to see where our students are performing currently and what might be ahead for them. We might discuss how do we move learning forward? Those are the teacher actions that we take, whether it's observing another teacher in the classroom, going to a learning lab visit, all of the things that move our practices forward. We also talk about what did we learn today? Reflecting on that data, reflecting on our actions as teachers to think about the impact that we're having in our students. And finally, that fifth question, who benefited and who did not benefit drives our work. We look critically at student results and we think about the impact as we had on our instruction and really reflect and plan those next steps. Chantel's going to talk a little bit about WIN time, where we take from PLC and what we've learned as adults and we inform our instructional moves.
Thank you, Melanie. Um, at Ada and all of our elementary schools, K6, we have that dedicated WIN time. So we look at each grade and their schedule. And you'll see it's represented at that 30-minute WIN block in yellow and working around the core, but also specials and making sure to prioritize that time. And then, we take a look at, after the initial assessments, where are our students? And we look at the teachers across the grade level and our paraprofessionals and instructional coaches. And we look at the board-approved, um, the, yeah, the instructional materials that we have, bridge the gap, and then our U5. And then, we see what students need, what skills specifically do we need to target that they need support with.
But don't take our word for it. We have a video that captures the spirit of what we do. I'd like to highlight that our fourth-grade team is featured in this video and they knock it out of the park every single day, focusing on what students need, responding to that with instructional moves and really keeping an eye on the data. And then we get some really, really great gains in academics. So with all the technology vibes, there we go. At Ada Elementary, we're inspiring young minds and cultivating possibility every single day through our commitment to excellence in literacy and reading achievement.
This quarter, our focus is WIN time and making sure that we are meeting everybody's needs.
Our journey begins with our dedicated professional learning communities where teachers come together with a shared vision of helping all learners achieve their individual potential. In these collaborative spaces, grade-level teams engage in powerful data-driven discussions, analyzing student performance, and sharing innovative teaching strategies.
We are constantly looking at data from our classes, no matter what subject we are working on, looking to see, all right, what are they doing well? And all right, how can we move them forward? We're looking at where did some of our kids miss things? And do we need to reteach, find new strategies to teach our kids? But our PLC time is always the three of us looking at what we're teaching, what we're learning from our kids, and working together to help them grow.
Our PLCs serve as the foundation for monitoring student growth and measuring the true impact of our instruction.
Two of them showed 100% of growth.
Through this collaborative approach, our teachers strengthen their collective ability to respond to each student's unique learning needs.
And this is what moving forward, like you could do with your WIN time, which would be beneficial for the students? And here's the why.
But we don't just stop at planning. We put our insights into action through our specially-designed WIN time.
It stands for what I need. Like, say, you need, uh, you need help on spelling or reading or math. You could work on one of those specific subjects.
This dedicated 30-minute block provides a focused opportunity for both intervention and enrichment, carefully tailored to each student's learning journey. During WIN time, our students receive individualized instruction that directly reflects the thoughtful planning and data analysis from our PLC meetings.
WIN time helps me be a better student.
WIN time helps me understand and spell words.
This powerful combination of collaborative teacher planning and targeted instruction creates an environment where every student can thrive. We see the results in our classrooms every day, growing confidence, improving skills, and expanding possibilities for each young reader. At Ada Elementary, our belief is simple yet profound. Every student deserves the opportunity to learn and grow every single day. Through our PLCs and WIN time, we're not just teaching. We're transforming lives and opening doors to limitless potential for all our learners.
Thank you. Um, are there any questions that I can help answer? Or anything? Any other questions? I think, I mean, it looks absolutely fantastic. It's one of those things where, you know, even when you have kids at home, you just are sort of focused on that. I can't imagine the level of coordination and effort that goes into making sure all, you know, 25 kids that are sitting in front of you that are all learning at different levels and comprehending things at different speeds, the amount of work that goes into coordinating and making that dance come out so that all kids win. And it looks like, you know, this extra 30 minutes built into the schedule is really super helpful to help the ones that may be struggling as well as, you know, being able to challenge the ones that need a little bit more to do.
Yes, exactly.
Fantastic.
Well, we appreciate your support and all the things that you do for us at Ada Elementary as well.
Thank you so much. Okay, we are going to then move on to our consent grouping. Um, is there anything in the consent grouping that anybody would like to pull out for separate consideration tonight? Okay, then could I please have a motion to approve consent grouping items A, 5A1 through 5D2? So, hold on a second. Thank you very much. And we will move for it straight over to our curriculum report. This is Philo.
All right. Well, um, after the curriculum committee heard their financial and operational update from Julie Davis, we moved right on to the latest instruction. Currently, we are in the design development stage of the Aquatic Center. Tower Pinkster shared the design specs with the committee at our meeting, emphasizing their commitment to ensuring the community needs will be met by the design as well as bringing our district into the 21st century with the, with the pool space and the ability to run conference and even state meets, which is something that we really should, you know, have been doing for a while. But, uh, you know, no need to toss out a decent pool, a decent, while it's still there, but it is time for us to move forward. Um, OAK was also there and gave us an update of their collaboration with Design as well and both companies plan to especially be mindful of the construction site itself and the adjacent properties for community members. But there are a lot of trees there. They're going to do their best they can to maintain the trees and the rolling hills that are there. Interesting factoid about that. There were no rolling hills there until the FAC was built. So it's not like we're replacing ancient forests, but they're going to do their best to keep as many of the trees in the look of the area and then also not to be upsetting to the community as well. So that's great. Our director, um, after that, our Director of Educational Equity and Inclusion, Tamasha James, reviewed the progress of our district-wide implementation of positive behavioral interventions and supports. As we know, this is also referred to as PBIS. Now, PBS has, PBIS has been around for quite a long time. I mean, I can attest to that as someone who's experienced several attempts at how starting this, you know, and moving it forward well over a decade ago. It's not something that's new. But every district's needs are different. And while there have been varied versions of individual forest hills buildings over the last, well, however many years, some of the earliest implementers put that in there, um, aligning the entire district is actually key for specifically data collection and fidelity checks. So these can have benefits at schools without it being aligned to the district. But to truly make, uh, to truly move that needle when it comes to our positive behavior interventions, it is something that needs alignment district-wide. And that's kind of what we've been growing about for the past year. And there's plenty of reasons to grow. Uh, but first, I mean, one of the questions that sort of came up is, well, why were we not doing this before when other districts in the area were with alignment? And, I mean, when it breaks down to it, it's because although other districts may have been seeing more of the behaviors that we are certainly hearing about in the news and know that are happening in classrooms, we weren't really dealing with those behaviors so much in forest hills for the longest time. But those behaviors are both definitely here now. So Tamasha confidently stated that what we're doing is the right work at the right time. This is the right time for alignment. And, um, the evidence that we've seen over the past year shows that this is an excellent implementation that's been going on here. So, um, our district-wide systematic communication is indeed improving. First off, 100% of our schools met the goals of first-year installation. Uh, we've secured funding for incentives. Uh, the next steps include training, transportation, and childcare to continue building the system consistency beyond the school day. Now, the more the behaviors are logged consistently, the more effectively they can be addressed. So what's great is we've now had a year of implementation data to drive those decisions and refine this. PBIS is a tier-one support in the multi-tiered system of supports, MTSS, as I know we've heard many times. We clarify that if anybody is more used to the acronym. Meaning it's a support that all students receive. Tier one, all students receive the support. Our latest data review shows that we are actually currently at a 74% for district capacity in the MTSS implementation after this first year, which is a great improvement considering we were only at 57% capacity back in February. That is leaps and bounds in the success of the implementation of this program. I mean, it takes time to build a successful system. And so we're continuing to build something in which we can truly be proud. At the rate that that's happening, we should truly be proud. So kudos to Tamasha, the district administration, and every staff member working together to provide this system of support. This work has also actually been recognized at the state level. So, um, Michigan's MTSS as our district, uh, by Michigan's MTSS, as our district has actually earned two honors for work that's been recognized. So first off, we earned the honor of data utilization and also that of implementation and impact for the 23-24 year. So, um, we're looking forward to seeing even more happening in this coming year. After that, the Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, Scott Hayes, shared some feedback from the latest staff professional development. And there was an increased positivity from staff on the relevance of their professional learning and also the application of their input, recognizing that when they give their feedback, it is actually being read, addressed, and that has made the changes or differences in what kind of professional development is being offered. So, um, that has been making staff members happy. He also reported on our progress toward adding junior kindergarten classes, AKA, used to be called Young Fives, now Junior Kindergarten. That will be coming into our district next fall. Currently, the district is considering the impacts on transportation, food service, and special education. There are a lot of details to work out here. But very confident that this is going to be something exciting for, uh, next fall. Admin have also visited the junior kindergarten systems at Pentwood, Rockford, some other schools. And they're planning a few more visits to another couple districts soon. So comparing what is working and what they've learned from those systems so that our system can be strong from the get-go. All right, on to our serious curricular instruction work here. Not that we don't love getting lots of updates. We definitely want to be in the know. But what we need to do is, um, or what needs to be covered here is Daniel Wells's book, Big Fish, A Novel of Mythic Proportions, is going to be read by seniors at Central High School. This is, our curriculum committee is going to have our 30-day review of this book and come back at you with our recommendation at the next board meeting. For this evening's action items, we really only have one. And the committee does recommend that we approve the use of Stephen Levitt's book, Think Like a Freak. This is for AP Seminar students at Eastern High School. And that is curriculum committee for this evening.
Thank you very much, Kristen. Does anybody have any questions on curriculum? All right. Then we will move right on over to a finance report from CJ Mashad.
Okay, um, yeah, we had a great similar discussion and overview of a lot of the bond construction happening. Um, Central High School is the one up to the plate right now, out to bid. Right now, those are due early December. So we anticipate we'll be able to see recommendations in front of us in January to approve some of that work. And then really looking forward, all the other projects are kind of steady on, like we've talked about before. No major updates or changes. Ada Elementary, Meadowbrook, and Northern High School are all in their kickoff phases as we look ahead now and into the spring. They'll be just starting the work that will happen there. We reviewed the monthly financial statements that were in the packet. Nothing, again, really of note. Um, but we're 33% of the way through the fiscal year and 23% of the way through the school year. So it takes us to our action items. Three of them are Ada Vista related, which is a theme that we will hopefully very soon be done with. Um, asbestos is a recurring theme as well. Um, this was back in March. Asbestos was found, as, uh, as it has as we've been going into the walls and then having to do the renovations there. We approved initial dollars that we thought were necessary to abate all of that. And there was more to be found than they originally thought. So, um, $51,460 were spent previously at the time as an emergency use case when they found it. So they've got it all. Um, and we're approving that now. Retrospect, that came out of 2023 capital projects. Um, the second project at Ada Vista is an additional ask to the original ask from, I think, November 2022 to just complete the rest of the project. Um, we know it has encountered a number of roadblocks, water service lines, lack of foundations in places, mechanical, structural, those things. Uh, we saw the OAK review a letter and recommendation there. So the ask is for an additional $248,022 to wrap up that project once and for all, again, out of 2023 capital projects here. And then the final Ada Vista ask is for media center shelving in the new media center, of course. Uh, Tower Pinkster worked with them to figure out what they need. Omni purchasing co-op like we do. And the shelving will be coming from Duell Corporation. Current amount not to exceed $35,100, also 2023 capital projects. Uh, next, the recommendation to purchase some bus cameras. We, uh, the ask is for 25 stop-arm cameras and 55 entrance-exit cameras to equip our fleet of buses, or the ones who need it. Um, the buses we bought, I think, in the last couple of years come now standard with a lot of these things. This is to equip the other buses that still have a lot of use left but don't have these safety measures on them. Um, so that's 25 buses that need the stop-arm cameras. And then most of them, we have 63 buses, 55 of them do not have the entrance-exit camera as well. So this will come from Sourcewell Purchasing Co-op, or we went through the Sourcewell Purchasing Co-op, for an amount not to exceed $52,800 from the general fund. The next two items are not costs, but things for us to approve. The first is the salary schedules for the superintendent and assistant superintendents. I think we all were able to review that and the rationale for that. Litigation in Michigan, we just need to have all that in place. Of course, all those positions have contracts, but not official salary schedules on the books. So this will formalize those and make sure that they are on file along with all of our other employee groups and employees. And the second is to adopt a resolution to join a class-action insulin lawsuit. Um, we have, again, we had this overview for us. We may have heard of this before. There's a nationwide lawsuit happening for insulin manufacturers, PBM's, people for the last years that have potentially inflated the cost of insulin. Um, we as a district are able to join this suit as somebody with a medical benefits plan that presumably paid, obviously, for insulin over the years. Um, it costs nothing for us to join. And it just means that there's a settlement, if there's, if there's something awards or money's awarded from that, that we would be eligible to have a piece of that. So we have a resolution that you saw in the packet that we can adopt to join that lawsuit. Um, the next item is an annual item, the NO resolution to collect 50% of our local taxes in the summer. We have the option to collect 50 or 100%, or I collect it at one time during the year in December or split that over two. We have split that over two in all of the areas that we're able to since 1986. So we do this, obviously, very routinely. Um, two exceptions to that are the city of Grand Rapids and Cannon Township, the small slices that Forest Hills has in those townships or taxing municipalities. Uh, but this obviously spreads our overall tax cost to taxpayers out over two payments instead of one. And it also helps us finance things over the summer while we're waiting for stated payments to come in October, which is when they begin. So again, this is just a resolution that you saw, something we do every year to allow us to do that. And the final piece was just property tax reimbursement, just one to Kent County, $40,403.83. Any questions?
Okay, sounds very good. Thank you very much, CJ. All right, so any further, did anyone come up with any questions or have any discussion on either of these items? Okay, let's move ahead with the roll call voting, please. All right, Dr. Mashad?
Yes.
Ms. Nymer?
Yes.
Mrs. DeBoer?
Yes.
Mrs. Hahn?
Yes.
Ms. Koval?
Yes.
Dr. Fosson?
Yes.
Mrs. Strang?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Um, up next on the agenda is the School Superintendents Association National Conference is being held in March of next year. And Superintendent Kirby would like to attend that to collaborate with other superintendents and work to, uh, shape initiatives, hopefully proactively of, that might be of use for our school district, for both students and staff alike. I think it's wonderful that he is seeking out these types of opportunities. Um, and we need to have a board approval so that he can attend this conference. So could I please have a motion to approve Superintendent Kirby's attendance at the 2025 AASA conference?
I move that we approve Superintendent Kirby's attendance at the AASA National Conference.
Second. All right, any discussion or questions about the conference? Okay, then can we just do a voice vote on this one, please? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Uh, next on the list is the Emergency Operations Plan. Um, the district has updated its emergency operations plan. This was a, an enormous effort led by Superintendent and Ryan Kimball, our Director of School Safety and Security. Um, they also worked together with local law enforcement and our safety personnel to put together a very comprehensive plan. Um, I think all of us have had a chance to review it. And, um, thank you to everybody who was involved in putting this together, because I know it's a monumental effort. Um, but it's going to be great that we have a playbook that the entire district uses with same procedures and same language that is used from building to building, to facility to facility. language that is used from building to building to facility to facility. So could I please have a motion to approve the FHPS Emergency Operations Plan?
And will we approve the FHPS Emergency Operations Plan?
Second. Is there any questions or discussions about this one? All right, again, could you a voice vote on this one? All in favor of approving the FHPS Emergency Operations Plan, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We are then moving on to our superintendents' report.
All right, thank you. Just special thanks to Ryan Kimball for the EOPs and our administrative team as they've gone through and worked with that. Ryan has had a humongous lift in his responsibilities in doing that, and they really put together something very good that we all can follow, and I do appreciate their work. A lot happening in education. Of course, the legislature is the piece that we wonder about over the next, you know, month and a half with the potential of lame duck. The biggest things we're looking at, as they have one day scheduled in November, they take off a significant amount of time for deer hunting, which we might want to think was the school district, but, just kidding. But they do take off a significant amount of time, and then they have eight days scheduled in the month of December, but the lame duck with the Republicans basically winning enough seats in the House that it does, it does look like there's going to be, you know, the Tripeca is going to be gone, so to speak. So there is some concerns around some of the action that might take place, which would potentially cost the district some finances and so on, so we really want to be wise in recognizing what happened. We'll certainly give out alerts if there's things that we need to act on, but some of the pieces that are most impactful potentially for schools is the PA one fifty-two potential increase, that's the health insurance and the heart cap, there's talk of that increasing by up to seven percent, which would be a significant amount across the district, but there's, that's just one iteration, there's, you know, three or four out there. And so, again, that could really cost the district a lot, so we just have to really make sure we pay attention to those types of things. And then there's also some, some talk around the Michigan merit curriculum, pros and cons to this. There is discussion about removing the course names. Right now, the Michigan merit curriculum is very specific on course names and the content of those courses, so the focus would shift on the content of the courses and not necessarily the course names, which would, in essence, provide flexibility for scheduling for students, so there's some potential benefits there. There's also a lot of discussion around firearm storage, the role of the school district at this point, you know, has not been, you know, dictated, but there's discussion around who's going to create these flyers, and then the school district obligation to actually have those sent to all families and so on, so there's a lot of discussion around that. That's been, you know, a discussion over the last few years with the Tripeca, certainly. And then the last is some discussion around twelfth graders having to have their vaccinations updated by the time they graduate. That one's new, but, you know, certainly there's the waiver and all of that, but CDC having a schedule and just making sure all kids when they graduate, I don't really know where that's coming from, but that is one that has been talked about a little bit. So those are the big pieces, and we'll just, you know, continue to keep in touch if there's action alerts and those kinds of things. These are the things that get a little scary because they happen in the wee hours of the morning, and, you know, people finally get the votes they need, and it's ramifications for decades at times. So the, one of the caveats that's happening is that there's some rogue dissension among one of the parties, and they're not having enough people there to vote to pass. So we'll see how that all comes about, the Democrats, you know, have the majority, but they haven't had enough to actually vote things on, so that would make lame duck very smooth, which would be beneficial probably. It was mentioned the junior kindergarten, we're continuing to plan, that's something, we are doing a school visit this week. There's a group working very hard on that, we'll be getting more and more information. It's a huge team effort, and we want to make sure what we roll out is something that the district can be proud of and our students can excel right from the start of this junior kindergarten program, so we're real excited about that. Special thanks to the foundation, they had their gala, and it was a fantastic evening, and was able to participate in that, and they did, you know, fundraise quite a bit, which goes back into our schools, which we really appreciate. Just at this time of year, I just remind people to, and all of you as well if you want, but to get updated in the school messenger system for signups for any cancellations and urgent notices that happen in the middle of the night or early morning hours around school and climate weather. I had a great start to my day today, I was at Frederick Meyer Garden, not to see the beauty, but we had a listen, learn, and lead event, which is all of Kent ISD high school students, so there's representatives from many of the high schools across our county. We had two students, Allison Durkin, and she actually was a moderator at one point for a student panel, and she also sat on a panel, and then she's from Eastern, and then Jake Barnes was a representative from the central side, and he was a panelist talking as well. So it was, they represented very well, we should be very proud of them. Had an opportunity to meet Mrs. Barnes and, you know, congratulated her and told her how proud she should be, and she certainly was. So the, one of the things that was really important to hear, so it was three to five hundred of us in that room, and, you know, a lot of adults that work in schools, but also community members that make this all happen, but they really talked about what their four major things that were, that were on their heart and mind, and it really, you know, resonated with me, especially with the work that we're, you know, doing in the district, have been doing, and will continue to be doing, and will start doing, but the number one topic on their hearts and minds was school safety. And they talked about those things, and they talked about, you know, how they would feel safe and the things that make a difference, and happy to say that many of them, you know, pointed to their school resource officers, and the bottom line in all of these four that I mentioned was about relationships and building relationships and having adult relationships. And so that was, that was really important to hear that as well. Student engagement was another area, student engagement meaning them really being active, engaged while in the classroom with their teachers, what it is that gets them engaged, not bored, on the flip side of that, so they talked about some of those things, and again, got back to relationships in the classroom. And then mental health was something that was really, really big for them as well, you know, they talked about, again, the relationships they had with the adults in the building and just having, you know, somebody to talk to around personal items and issues, just being really important to supporting them. And then there was discussion around really making resources available for them so that there was not shame in asking for help. So that was really powerful to hear our students talk about that, or all the students talk about that. And then lastly, belongingness was another. And again, you talk about, they talked all about relationships, 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 but not just about being included, but being, belongingness being different in the respect that they not only were with a group of people, but they felt like they belonged there and they had a common, common feeling, they talked about their needs for teams, and then it was, it was just fantastic. You know, Allison Durkin was, basically did a Hawk Teams commercial, you know, talking about the impact that the Hawk Teams has for her and her students and the benefits of that. So again, they represented the district very well, I wanted to make sure to mention that, but just, I think it's really important to know that all of the students across our county had those four things as topics, not a mystery to me as superintendent or those of us that work in schools, and that's where we need to focus our energies on those student needs, and I feel good about where we're at as far as addressing these things. This time of year, it's a great time to really think about things that you're thankful for, but I just wanted to say thanks to the board for your support since I've gotten here into the community, they've been incredibly supportive, and I've enjoyed my time here and continue to work with our Hawks, Huskies, and Rangers, and just would encourage you to also, you know, thank people during this time of year, because I know that you guys have a lot of things for the work that's happening in the district, so just encourage you to reach out to them, and say the same. That's it.
Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, up next, board communications. I'm going to start out this one because many of us attended MASV last month, and we often try to split up so that we can go to as many different sessions as we possibly can and cover more ground, rather than all of us going and hearing the exact same thing. So I thought it might be nice if we each gave a brief report out on what maybe it is we learned in one or two of the classes or breakout sessions, so that everybody else can hear some of the things that were talked about in that weekend session. So I can just go first, because I already got my microphone out. One class that I attended was one called Data Dashboards, which was a class about how to make some of our data more easily accessible and understandable for people in the district. So like, we have the budget transparency icon on our webpage, but sometimes that can be difficult to understand, and there's lots of pages of stuff to go through, there's the Michigan school data, and that can, I've tried using that a million times, and it can be really difficult to try to figure out how to get to use that. So this was sort of a class about different ways that we can share data in an easily accessible way on the website, both for internal use and for external use for community members. So, you know, it's, you can just sort of say, you know, hey, this is a goal that we have in our district, and, you know, it's got a number attached to it or something like that, and you could put it on there and show your progress as you go along and how that changes over time. You know, in our district, you just tell them that, I mean, we've heard about it today with the data that they do in the WIN program, I mean, and everything that is done in this district has data that goes behind it and feeds into the information that is used to be able to make adjustments and make changes to make sure that everybody is learning and happy. So, you know, like, you can have reading goals and say, this is what a goal is for, say, like, third grade English, and then you implement a program and go, all right, well, now what are, how is our reading going based on that? You know, just to have certain simple things that are being worked on in the district and show how initiatives that are being implemented to try to help further things along, see what kind of impact they have, just being able to have that out there. You know, it doesn't have to be pages, we looked at some other schools that had data dashboards, and it was really neat to just be able to see, you know, some very simple ways you could do that, to put stuff out there, to make it a little bit more accessible and transparent for everybody. And then I also went to a breakout session on the role of the school board in educational design, and I thought that this one was particularly timely, given all of the bodywork that we have going on. And really, my main takeaway on this class was that should always make sure that the architects and the construction groups and everybody that's involved is always going back to sort of what it is, what they're proposing in alliance with the school district's vision and mission. You know, sort of always going back and looking at and going, all right, we're recommending this and we're recommending that. Does that actually, like, all right, let's take a step back, what are our goals for this building or this field or whatever the case may be? And is it, you know, is the vision to create a flexible and collaborative space? Okay, well, is that what we're doing with the money? Is that how it's playing out, or do we need to take a step back and go, oh, wait a minute, I like what you're doing here, but it doesn't seem to fit with what our goal is for, you know, 21st century education or whatever the case may be? Just to always, you know, keep everything in the vision in mind, and, you know, sort of that's sort of the school board's thirty thousand foot level, so something for us to sort of keep in mind as all of the body projects go forward is to always just look and say, is that hitting the intended goal? Those were the two of the many, many sessions that I went to when I was there.
All right, well, as vice president, I will follow that one up. So I know that you were there a good day longer than I was, but I also attended two classes, and I, of course, attended all the breakout sessions as well. The class that I found to be the most engaging to me was understanding the legislative process, and I had hoped with, like, a second term that I was going to really become our liaison at the state level with legislation, but that is not to be. But what I found fascinating about the course, and I would recommend any of you take this one, is that it really laid out the exact steps that we need, and also emphasized the influence that school boards can really have at the state level. Now, in Forest Hills, we have not had a legislative presence as far back as Mary's, that she doesn't remember anything like that as well, but we absolutely are the kind of voice that districts around the state want to hear from, because there are, you know, there are districts who are always having to advocate for, for, you know, the very basic things, and then districts that feel much more comfortable feel like they don't need to be a presence there, and we are precisely the voices that they want to see. So I would, you know, encourage you to take this course yourself, learn more about it, figure out who can be, you know, our most active advocate on this board in the coming years. Let's see, I also attended a couple, you know, lots of breakout sessions, there were a couple that really stood out to me, one was on the Open Meetings Act specifically. And what I loved about the Open Meetings Act breakout session was it was a wonderful opportunity to hear from lawyers precisely how to follow all the law to a T. I can report regardless of whatever kind of feedback we may be getting from outside sources, we are adhering to the Open Meetings Act laws. There is, you know, ways in which we can adjust practices and still be within the law, but we are doing a fine job with adhering to the law itself. A nice thing is finding out what other schools are doing as well, that was a part of the breakout session, and how they handle their meetings and what the results of that are, and learning from mistakes from other districts and learning about successes as well. So I found that to be a really valuable one, especially when we're learning about how to handle miscommunications about the Open Meetings Act and how our meetings are run. And then I really personally, it's a, you know, a personal subject to me, enjoyed the breakout session on trauma, learning about understanding trauma through NEAR or neuroscience, epigenetics, ACEs and Brazilians, and the impacts of trauma on our human bodies but also our minds, in particular for students, how they are able to, or more specifically, not able to process information when there's trauma to deal with. I found this actually to be a very positive session, because digging into the latest data, particularly on epigenetics, which at first was viewed as like, hmm, this is pseudoscience, but now more time has gone into that, more studies have been done to find that cycle breakers exist, and that it is actually possible to change what is almost nature in our systems for trauma with certain positive experiences, and that also that trauma itself, it's not the type of trauma that a person experiences, that means that one trauma experience is better or worse, lighter or heavier than another, but the amount of time that a person spends in toxic stress situations. And so what is toxic stress for one student is going to be very different than it would be for another student or another person. And also to acknowledge that although it is quite overlooked, that we absolutely have a student population here in Forest Hills who are dealing with trying to learn through a history of toxic stress and trauma, and it's just really important that we address this, especially when we've had, well, national planetary trauma in recent years and the impacts that that's having on, well, an entire society, a whole community, not just the individual student. So I found that to be a fascinating breakout session.
There you go.
Sure.
So it's interesting, we were out, many of us were there for four days, and they divided the session up into general sessions, clinic sessions, and then CBA courses. And what so neat is I was trying to figure out what to share with you all, is during Superintendent Kirby talk about this listen, we learn that he just went to, and how much these kids just want to be connected. Think about it, this Doc Brown, I think his name's Dr. Adolf Brown, he hosts the parent test at ABC, who is all about connecting with kids, he used the analogy of a backpack, you don't know what's in people's backpacks, and some of his cool quotes that we were all scribbling deep virtually were, "Rules don't govern behavior, relationships do. More is caught at first than is taught, and don't judge students by their exit, don't judge students' exits by their entrance." So it's just neat to see that so much of their theme was about where we're at at this point in life, and not reading away from the tick, but educate the whole child and make sure we watch out for them. So it's fun, because the one session I went to that I was actually really excited about, and I know many of you have experienced with this, I'd never heard of it before or been a part of it, was capturing kids' hearts, and they are one hundred percent aligned with our full mantra of doing what's best for kids. What was so heartwarming is the co-presenter was our own superintendent, so I would say we're all in very good hands, knowing that that's the way that we take in this district, all of us at the table. Went to a couple CBA sessions, and getting on my soapbox a little bit, please know how fun it is, CBA stands for Certified Board Members of Words Program. So the nine CBA classes are to educate new board members, identify good board members. So when you sit there and they go around the room and say, how many years have you been on the board? Six months, two months, eight months, nineteen years? It's a little embarrassing, but what was so validating for me is it is really solid foundation to be able to equip all of us to really do the jobs we're meant to do. You heard about a couple of what they said, it's finance, it's curriculum, it's legislation. I think I went to one on negotiations. We have no part of that, but to understand what our role is and how to feel comfortable ratifying a tentative agreement is very comforting. So here's the soapbox part. I first brought this, we went to our first conference in twenty twenty-one, and this is what I read to everybody at the November meeting that year. The second thing I went to that was actually encouraged by our superintendent was an onboarding session, and I thought, we do a great job onboarding, we have a very thorough, detailed, scheduled process where our new trustees meet with all of our cabinet members, our superintendent with Vail, with our president, with other people, but it was neat to hear that validation through Fenton Schools, and a couple of those things that you say, oh, wow, that's cool. One, the reminder that we truly get all that done and put so much district effort into making sure that our trustees have had disorientation before they attend a first board meeting in January. So cool. Here was one of those things, fun to actually learn something. CBA one-on-one is the very first class that most of us have taken. What Fenton does is they ask other new trustees in their county if they would like to get together and all learn at the same table. It's very cool to do a class like that with other people in the room to bounce things off of each other, and how nice to do it with people that have similar demographics or similar trends or issues. So we have reached out to our other nineteen cohorts in the ISD, and the answers are so comforting and warm and fuzzy. We have twenty-eight new trustees in the ISD, that is a ton. So MASV is willing to do that, we will keep reporting back and forth to each other and see if maybe that can be something we can pull together. Northview's a yes, we have a couple in ours that are a yes, so a few more, maybe that would be a neat tradition to get into. But the reason that would be cool, to read the thing that I said I was going to read too, is, is it time to think about how do we implement a practice or a policy change where that is something required from a professional development perspective by our board? We have heard all about professional development today for our own staff, is there any reason we shouldn't be expecting that of ourselves? So Clarkston is the one. So Clarkson is the one, their board policy says, "The board believes that the preparation of each board member for the performance of board duties is essential to the effective functioning of the board. This includes attending professional development classes and workshops in order to become a certified board member. Is the expectation of this board that its members shall become certified through the Michigan Association of School Boards, certified board member to work program with a reasonable period of time." And then Northview, also on our ISD, also says that "The board of education will seek the following products or end results of its work, including Level 1, CBA 101 to CBA 109, board certification achieved within the first half of their first term, executive limitations, blah, 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 blah." And as we said, Fenton does it too. So I hope you all will have that discussion in your organizational meeting or sometime soon and realize that, you know, being equipped to do your job correctly is a wonderful gift. And it makes it such a, I don't know, more satisfying, enjoyable way to do it. That's enough for me. Don't mess up that. Thanks.
Anyone else would like to move?
Yeah, I can go.
Okay.
Did you take that paper off your big pile, Mary?
I didn't. I was about to start down.
All right, so I went to CBA 102, which is governing through policy. I liked this course a lot. It was a good reminder about how policy works and why we operate by it as a school board. I just kind of jotted down a couple, a few one-liners that I thought were valuable and worth recapping. So first, just very obvious, that every board meeting, policy is inactive. With every motion that we pass, procedures will be implemented. Usually those are daily operating procedures that somebody else in the district is going to implement under the superintendent's watch. Without a good, clear statement of practice, just for everyone just to kind of always have in the back of their head. Sometimes we talk about a lot of things at once. And so it can get confusing to separate out some of these terms. Just that bylaws that we have as a board refer to the structure of our board and what we as the board do. So like, how do we run meetings? How do we divide up people into different committees? Those are our bylaws. Policy is what we want the district, all caps, the district to do, not us. And it's important to note that there is often a difference between a building policy and a district policy. I think the word policy gets used in a lot of different contexts and that gets confusing. But a school might have a dismissal routine of policy. Or they might have a policy about, the list is endless, right? But that doesn't mean it's a district policy. District policies are what we ask the districts to enforce. But a building policy is going to have a little bit more flexibility and it can be easier to adjust as needed. Where a district policy is not that easy to adjust on the why. And then importantly, we talked a while about procedure and who is responsible for carrying out the procedures to put policy in play, and that is the district. And this I really thought was valuable. And I struggled with this a lot when I first joined the board. If we find ourselves as a board discussing how a policy is to be implemented, then a board is beginning to step into the role of the superintendent. And that is not good for our governance. So in conclusion, the attorney who led this course wanted all of us to remember that the board creates the policy, the superintendent implements that policy, and then creates all the mechanisms for it to happen. And the board evaluates how it is working after it's been given a chance to actually work. So that was 102, CBA 102.
Thank you.
And briefly, I got to attend quite a few as well. Took a break from the normal finance nerd topics. Well, I did attend those two, but I also went to, I also went to some policy topics as well, which I liked. There was a school board policy hot topics session, which was legal and educator-led opinions on both, on just some of the recent things that districts across Michigan, across the country have had to implement or have brought their way. It was very encouraging to see how groups have handled them and how districts have, you know, followed the statutes that are in place for them to do and when things get passed and put into place at the national level and at the state level. So it was good discussion to hear from multiple different views on some of that. And then the other one was interesting too. It was called Policy Remix, An Innovative Policy Review. This was led by the Mount Pleasant Board of Education superintendent. And they were detailing how they, this was brought on by them wholesale changing policy providers. But then how they took that opportunity to make it part of their standing board meetings where they would pick sections of their policies, one by one, by one, by one, and have open discussion about them and wordsmith them together and implement any changes that they felt could make them more specific to the Mount Pleasant School District and their students. They said that it added at least a cool hour to pretty much every one of their meetings. So I don't know that that's something that we look to do, but it was a very interesting way to see how they look at the detail in their policies. And it was good food for thought, certainly. So they were good, they were good classes, cool.
Thank you. I appreciate everybody indulging me with that. Like I said, it's nice to be able to hear a little bit about, and we don't, yeah, it's not like we all hang out and have dinner with each other all the time or anything, like to talk about these things. So it's nice to let everybody else, you know, people that weren't able to go this year to hear some of the things that we learned. And hopefully you'll be able to attend next year. Are there any other board communications?
I do.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I did go last year and it was very beneficial. So I'm hoping to go next year, but I'm glad all of you could go. I just wanted to tell you about something exciting that happened in our district last Friday. All of our third graders took a little field trip to the Fine Arts Center. And they had a couple hours session on what belonging means in our district. And it was led by Tomasha James. And it was really led by high schoolers that are on her committee. And what was really cool is when she and they were planning all of this, they talked about what they wished they would have known when they were in third grade, to increase belonging, what increases belonging and what decreases belonging. So I heard it was a very big success. And now Tomasha is following up with all the third grade teachers to find out, to get feedback from that and see where we go from here and to keep the belonging going. Thought that was very timely with what you talked about.
Awesome, thank you.
I do have a quick foundation update if you want. To add some specifics to what Mr. Kirby mentioned, on top of the $112,000 given out, awarded in the fall grant cycle, the gala raised an additional $83,000. That also goes right back into every school building. And the spring grant cycle starts again in January. So district can think over the holiday break and think of some things that would add to their classrooms and buildings, anticipating to award up to another $100,000 or so in projects there too. So as a heads up to community, the annual district mailer, I think, is coming to inboxes, emails in December from the foundation that asks for any amount of giving if you want to give to the foundation. That's the opportunity for everyone who isn't able to attend the gala or one of their events to still chip in a handful of dollars that goes directly into so many amazing things that happen for kids in this district. If you want evidence of what that is, the website has a lot of information. Or step into obviously any of our school buildings to see what the foundation has done by granting this money back to the schools to use. So be on the lookout for that. Feel free to chip in around the holidays if you're able to the foundation. That's all.
Thank you. Any other board communications? All right, then we are going to move on to public comments. At this time, we welcome members of the community to address the board. When you are called, please come up to the microphone, get your name and your address, and limit your comments to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the board. For established procedures, we will not respond to questions or interact with the speaker during public comment. Everyone who indicates that they would like follow-up from the district will get follow-up from the appropriate administrator. Okay, first we have Leslie Addison.
Good evening, hola. I'm Leslie Addison. And for the last 28 years, I've been a teacher throughout the building in such buildings as Pine Ridge, Good Billy, Ateavista, and other trails. Also, both my children attended and have graduated recently from the school district. In recent weeks, I've been pleasantly surprised to see that after the final district audit and everything, the district has been graciously able to maintain a $5.9 million surplus into the budget and that that has been placed back into our jumbo budget. I can bring that to around a grand total of $24 million, which is a healthy balance. And I think probably due to past sound economic advice and practices, we usually tend to keep the majority of our bottle of that fund balance in case of emergencies or often at distance, sometimes we may need that for something. Simultaneously, I was somewhat dismayed thinking about that as I look, I listen, I live around in the current conditions I'm in each day with my staff and my students. And I think about things that they are facing each day within our buildings. There's a higher level of stress, anxiety, frustration, burnout at times due to multiple factors that come into these areas each day. And dealing with those types of things are things we think, you know, on a daily basis within your job and after you're going home at night as well. Some of the things that come to mind are the lack of a full-time counselor, some mental health liaisons in all of the buildings, most of which contain 500 or more of our students that come with multiple factors of trauma, as we have talked about more in recent years as well. In my building alone, within the last few weeks, we've experienced higher levels of bullying incidents, confiscation of a weapon on the bus, and a couple confirmed admissions of past suicide attempts. Another factor I noticed is a lack of sufficient bus drivers and substitute teachers who play vital roles in our districts every day. Part of it is due to lack of a sufficient wage we can offer or flexible times in order to help them meet the standard of living, cost of living for themselves and to be able to support their families as they move on in a job they're looking to do and support us with every day. Another factor I've seen as well is the lack or ability to add extra sessions to certain classrooms, departments, when you already have some of them bursting at the seams with higher class levels or higher class sizes. That rightly again adds to the stress and the level of the trauma for some kids in class. And you have to think about the continuum of the learning, what pace, what deflation, what things can be accomplished in those situations as well. So as I look around and I think about all of those things and along with that, the things we've noticed in the last few years as well, reduction, cancellation, postponements.
Thank you, I'm sorry your three minutes is up.
It's gone by. All right.
Thank you. Vincent Monahar.
Sorry, Vincent Monahar. Vincent Monahar, you'll find me at 6860 Casco Road. My speech reflects my views and not any affiliated organization. Ratings seem to be irrelevant here, but I would recommend that all minors leave this room immediately. On 9/23/24, by email, board president Fawcett wrote, quote, "FHPS libraries do not contain pornography. We do not include pornography in our collections of the past, which will not happen now, and do not intend to include it in the future." This book is Tricks by Ellen Hopkins. You will find it in Northern and Central High, available to students as young as 14. Though the men we perform for, like when we dance with each other, breast-to-shoulder and belly dacks, tan skin against pale, fingers touching hidden places we won't put declines touch. I so enjoy reducing them to masturbation. It's like they're masturbating for me and I can control them when they come. But now Jerome wants other things. Let me watch you touch yourself. Greedy things. Did you know guys like you use vibrators too, like this? Downright disgusting things. Your period? I like the taste of blood. Plant C means pretending to enjoy his sex. Tonight means letting him call me mommy as he sits on my lap and nurses. Mommy loves you, Jerome. That excites him. I love you too, mommy. See how much? Lover knows Jerome wants to punish mommy. The sex is rough, but it doesn't hurt nearly as bad as a pretense. Cost? You want me to pay for it? I don't pay for sex. Even if I did, I wouldn't pay for you, you junkie bitch. He's all predator now. He takes me down. I go limp. No, he screams. Fight, you goddamn whore. Fight or I'll kill you. Don't fight left and me. Fuck me, kill me. Don't care. He wants both. His penis stabs me, his hands lockwork my throat. He's not here. I pretend he is and I let his hands explore the rounds of my breasts, move in tighter and tighter orbits, and now figure circle of a heart center of knots. Raise like it's cold in here. The men we perform for, like when we, oh, we didn't get that one right. A little girl on girl rubbing. She strips free of her bra. Suddenly his hands are all over her. Hey, cut it out. The creep snakes his arms around her waist and squeezes. All I want is a handjob. Give it to me and I'll let you go. You over there, play with yourself. Good thing it doesn't take long. He finishes with a loud ah. He does let go of Alex who wipes her hand on his shirt. He's like a fucking bull. Holy crap dude, I don't know. What's wrong, kid? Never done it with a real man before? You want me wrapped? Do it for me. He pushes me to my knees. I open the foil pouch, roll down the condom. I close my eyes, fighting not to gag at the taste of the lubricant, not to choke on his thrust against my throat. He pulls me to my feet, drapes his back with his chest. Check it out, the little boy likes that. He reaches down between my thighs, look how hard he is. He moves me towards the bed, urges me face down. Down go my boxers. Oh, mommy, what a sweet little bottom. Dan is in for a real treat, isn't he?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Monahar.
Good night.
Steve Canyon.
I shall pass, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Doug Lee.
My name is Doug Lee, I'm a resident here in Forest Hills. I just kind of want to remind everybody, I've been talking now for almost five years. I've had kids, two generations of kids in Forest Hills. I have my oldest son who graduated '06, my daughter '09, and is 16 and 18. And I fundamentally see a huge change in this district from the first set of kids to my, it was a gap in time for like, in our last generation. There are 538 school districts in this state in Michigan. And I can go to any school district except for one and the board works exactly like this. And they work exactly like this in the U.S. because of the Michigan School Board Association that you just attended. They teach you how to be a school board member instead of listening to the stakeholders in your community. I represent an organization on Forest Hills for Just Education and many of you people know that. We represent two things, parental rights and academic excellence. I have been preaching up here for five years on academic excellence. And I have listened to social emotional learning and how we feel, safe spaces. Well, the good news is, there's Mr. Superintendent Kirby, there was more than a super trifecta that just happened in elections, because elections do matter. The federal government and the population, the majority of the United States population of this country have tired of this woke community. Gender, all the things we've been talking about for four years. That'll end, that'll end very shortly. And it'll be nice to actually, for the first time, you always have to start listening to the citizens of this community, the parents and grandparents for the very first time. I suggest that you look toward us and who paid the taxes here, who sent our kids here and our grandkids here, opposed to going and learning how to be in lockstep with 530 other school districts in Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you. Dorothy Cribs.
I'm Dorothy Cribs, Robert Cribs's wife. Some pretty disturbing things have happened to us recently. I don't use social media. And it was brought to my attention that some people in the FHPS community have been posting lies about both me and my husband based on a hit piece that my 28-year-old child posted on Reddit. I am here mainly because I want to address the situation since people continue to spread gossip and lies. The community needs to understand that what is being said grossly misrepresents what happened in our lives. We did not cast our oldest aside when our oldest came out as trans their junior year in college. Contrary to claims, we never abandoned our oldest child and consistently supported our child through college, including financial assistance and attendant counseling. We have tried to have a relationship with our oldest child who stopped speaking to us at various times and the entire extended family. Our oldest was abusive and mean. We worried for our personal safety and felt that we had to keep evidence in case something ever happened. These public discussions have caused significant harm to our family, particularly to our 24-year-old son. He felt compelled to defend our family's reputation, highlighting the profound consequences of spreading incomplete information. The social media critics chose to ignore our youngest son's response. Robert didn't respond to these social media texts, fearing that engaging would likely escalate the escalate the situation and cause further damage to our family. In the end, we didn't care about the election, we only cared about our youngest being okay. We continue to love both our children, we were actively working towards reconciliation with the oldest before the public attacks derailed our progress, and now we are back to square one because of what was done on social media by people in the Forest Hills public school community. We seek understanding and privacy as we navigate these personal challenges. But I have to say that I am wholly disappointed in how mean and ugly some people have been in just telling things that are saying things that are just wholly not true about us. And Robert wouldn't have put himself out here to try and run for Forest Hills School Board if any of these horrible things were true, and you wouldn't have him be coach or substitute teacher or bus driver in the schools. And I would think that people that spread the lies would, I don't know, think again about this, this is not what Forest Hills is about. And we really, you know, I would, I would like the board to think about that and perhaps put out something against that kind of misuse of social media. Thank you.
All right, at this time, public comments are closed. The board thanks you for your input, and the appropriate district representative will follow up with all of those who requested it. Is there any other business before the board this minute? All right, hearing none, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.